2020 Tech Change Committee. I believe that we have two items on for today. TC 820 Short Term Rental and TC 1420 Community Gardens with On-Site Sales. We heard TC 820 Short Term Rental at the last committee meeting, and we'll start off with that and hear the updates from staff.
Thank you. This is Mark Holland with Planning and Development. As you said, we did speak on this item at our last meeting, and there was some follow-up as to trying to paint someone from the UNC School of Government to speak on this item. And we do have someone here in attendance today in this meeting. Ms. Rebecca, forgive me if I get the last name incorrect, Baggett, with the School of Government here to speak on the short-term rental if the committee would like to get their input. There were some questions about the other communities that we had been in contact with or researched in our development of this ordinance, as well as some questions about how it would affect the housing affordability. Most of the communities that we did speak with or were researching or researched with this tech change were in the state. Most of the usual municipalities that we contact, Durham, Chapel Hill, Winston-Salem, Greensboro, several along the coast, which included Wilmington, Wrightsville Beach, Topsil Beach, as well as in the eastern part of the state. Asheville was one that we had a lot of input with or considered their ordinance, as well as some of those. Let's see, what was the other one? I wrote these down, sorry. Boone was the other one. Some of those regulations, which I think that the way they differed than what we're proposing was some of them didn't have limitations on the number of rooms in the house in which could be rented. And they also had a limitation on the number of occupants. So that is something that the planning commission could consider if they wish to do that. That was probably the thing that differentiated what was being proposed in other jurisdictions as opposed to here in Raleigh. A lot of what we had developed was heavily influenced by what was in Asheville. So I would say if there was any one element that we could sort of use to our benefit perhaps is that limitation on the number of bedrooms that could be used within a dwelling for the purposes of short-term rental. As far as housing affordability, just based on some of the research that I have done, I mean, there's no real way to say how it would affect Raleigh specifically, but just based on some of the reading that I've done, it could have an effect on housing affordability in general just because you're taking properties that were once either resident occupied or straight-up rental units. Those would be something that's taken off the market. So the number of actual rental units, as far as like, you know, where you have like a yearly lease, that type of rental unit, those would then be off the market, which would create fewer types of rental units in that category. So with fewer units, it would naturally drive up the prices a little bit, but to what number, that's difficult to say. So I think the effect that they use is the term they use for it is hotelization of the homes. So that would have an effect on the affordability of short-term rentals that are more than 30 days. So, but again, there's no real way to tell exactly what type of, to what percentage that would affect those types of units. So I think those were the main concerns that the committee had. And I would ask that Rebecca, if she had any additional comments, that she speak on those if possible. I see that she is in attendance here, so I would call on her if she had anything extra to add to that.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here today to be able to talk to you all. I have done a lot of work with short-term rentals over the years, and it's interesting because everyone's short-term rental ordinance sort of comes out differently to serve their community. I think first I'll go touch on the affordable housing and the effect of short-term rentals on that, because I've done some research on that. There are very few studies that truly explore the effect of short-term rentals on affordable housing costs and housing availability, and that's really two primary reasons for that. First, the sort of STR phenomenon is relatively recent, and therefore there's just limited data. And second, this research question is methodologically challenging. It's hard to say, and the method is hard to sort of answer because so many factors contribute to an affordable housing shortage overall. It's certainly not just the increase of short-term rentals necessarily within a community, although that can have an effect. The key factors are usually a combination of the economy. In the recent five years, our economy pre-COVID has been going strong, and people are earning more money. Unemployment has generally been low. Cities like Raleigh and Durham are generally popular places for people to relocate. So there might just be a natural housing shortage because of that as well. And home building costs have risen by over 20% for materials. Regulatory costs have increased, and there's a shortage of skilled labor. So all of these elements sort of come together to form a perfect storm for an affordable housing issue. Short-term rentals play a part of that. I looked at two studies. One is a 2019 Oxford Economics Study on the Drivers of Housing Affordability. And it looked at the years 2014 to 2018. And this is a nationwide study, which a lot of them really focus on really large cities like San Francisco or Los Angeles and how affordable housing is affected there. So I liked the study because it was broader. But they noted that rent prices had increased about 4.3% from 2014 to 2018. And to account for that 4.3%, about 3.9% was just due to an increase in median income. People are making more money, and rents generally increased. Short-term rental density, they said, contributed to about 0.2% of the increase. And the other 0.2% was a lack of housing units per household just in general. People are moving into the areas, and there's a housing shortage. And that could probably also include some short-term rentals, a lack of housing units as well. So only about 0.4% of that 4.3% increase was possibly due to a lack of housing units or short-term rental densities. And then the overall housing costs, they said, have increased 14.9% during those years, but 1% of that increase would be due to short-term rentals. Lower unemployment and increase in median income were the two largest factors that led to an overall increase in rental housing prices. Same sort of outcome came from a different Harvard Business Review article about the effects of home sharing on house prices and rents. So sort of in some, like, multiple factors contribute to affordable housing issues, but the effect of STRs and housing availability is likely city and even neighborhood-specific. So Raleigh is going to have more of a problem with this, especially in their inside-the-beltline areas or in their five points of all those houses or more houses turn over to short-term rentals because, as mentioned, there'll be fewer units available for other people to rent long-term. But in general, short-term rentals account for about 1/5th of actual rent growth or rent increases and about 1/7th of housing price increases. So they're not a key factor to the overall increase in prices for rent or housing costs, but they do play a role. And when you're in popular tourism zip codes, they're going to even play more of a role. And like, I think Venice Beach in Los Angeles has like 12.5% of its housing stock now available for short-term rentals, and that's caused like a crisis because that's a huge amount of, a huge percentage of the houses and units to be taken off the market. So Raleigh probably needs to pay attention to the trends and the areas and how many units are being taken off the market for long-term rentals or for sale in general as it moves forward with the short-term rental regulations. I've also reviewed the ordinance. Does anyone have any questions about the housing affordability before we go there?
I actually just had a, I was just curious if you could just share your role or position at the school and kind of your background?
Sure, that's a great idea. As I'm Rebecca Baggett, I've been with this school for about four years now. And before this, I clerked for the Court of Appeals. When I came to the School of Government, my role has been attorney educator. So primarily, I assist the faculty with different research and writing projects. I also developed my own specialty in short-term rentals. And I've consulted with multiple municipalities across the state to help them sort of understand what you can and cannot do legally to regulate short-term rentals. And I've kept an eye on the national trends and how the court cases are coming out about where overregulation is happening, what maybe is overstepping, where you're no longer within the zoning authority when you are regulating short-term rentals. So it's been really interesting about three years now or so that I've been focusing on short-term rentals and to watch how this area of law is developing. I do know that North Carolina doesn't have a lot of case law on this, so you don't necessarily know where the line is between what you can regulate and what you can't regulate, which makes it more difficult for y'all to draft regulations that we know would be upheld if challenged in court. And obviously Wilmington has faced that issue recently. I think that their short-term rental regulations were struck down and are probably have been appealed in the Court of Appeals. So we'll learn more from that case. But yeah, in general, I really like this area of law. It's, there's not always a clear answer, so I'll do my best to answer your questions. But half the time, it's like, we think we can do this, but if it's challenged in court, here's how it would be challenged on these grounds.
Okay, thank you. It looks like we have a question from Commissioner Miller.
How in affordability? My internet went down momentarily, so I called in, but I think I missed about 20 seconds there. You said that the short-term rentals account for 1/5th of rent and long-term rental increases and 1/7th of housing price increases. What was the subset that you were looking at?
The subset was the number of available housing in the United States that was made for rent. So it's all short-term rentals that were available on VRBO and Airbnb, and sort of the price, the factors that affected their cost for either their rental price or their sales price. That's what the study was looking at. They said basically that a 1% increase in short-term rentals listings was associated with a 0.018 increase in rental rates and a 0.026 increase in house prices, which would translate into about an annual increase of $9 in rent per month and $1,800 extra on a house price charge.
So that's a 1% increase in short-term rentals? Increase to 1%?
A 1% increase in STR listings would be associated with a 0.018% increase in rental rates and a 0.026 increase in house prices.
Great. Thank you.
Which was fairly consistent amongst the two studies that I looked at closely.
Okay. Commissioner O'Haver, did you have a question or is that a fake-out?
Yeah, what a fake-out. I thought Rebecca was going to keep going. Just want to make sure I clarify. So the baseline of the current STRs in the area, if you increase that by 1%, so this ordinance passes, there's an additional 1% increase in our area to STRs. What this most recent study found was that we can anticipate a $9 per month increase in rent on rental units, and I guess that'd be long-term rental units, and an $1,800 increase on the cost of, I guess, just a standard cost of a house. I mean, $1,800 on one house is a big difference compared to $1,800 on another house.
Correct. Standard, it was looking at like a median zip code sort of cost of houses in this study. So I don't know exactly what the average cost, but they said like, a touristy, generally touristy zip code, if they had a 1% increase, would add about $1,800 on a house price for every 1% increase.
Gotcha. I guess as we start to get into, we're going to get into the ordinance, I'm curious about what the issues were with Wilmington, but maybe that can wait till we go through our ordinance.
I'm happy to tell you, discuss what happened with Wilmington. So they had a short-term rental ordinance.
Before we move to that one, sorry, just wanted to, before we leave that last topic, we keep talking about a 1% increase in STR listings. I imagine there's some type of marginal structure there. I understand sort of nationwide, if there were, there's already a certain threshold number, and then there is a 1% increase in the total number of listings. But let's say there are 100 listings currently in Raleigh. If there's one additional listing, that would be a 1% increase. It wouldn't necessarily make that same impact here. And seeing as how we don't have them here, I certainly appreciate sort of overall what that means in terms of macroeconomics and supply and demand and how removing something from housing supply obviously removes it from the housing supply. But I just wanted to sort of clarify that in terms of, we might not be able to specifically quantify for Raleigh what that means in terms of dollar figures. Anyways, just wanted to, I'm no statistics major, but I know at least that little bit.
That's true, because if they're pulling from a nationwide average, obviously that's much higher than Raleigh market.
There is information online as to how many whole-house and private-room listings there are in Raleigh. The way, I guess the website AirDNA that Commissioner Thomas Sulo mentioned at our last meeting, I went online and checked that to get some information. And they don't have just corporate limits of Raleigh. They basically have, when you click on Raleigh, you get Raleigh and unincorporated Wake County. So it's not a perfect, it's not a perfect grouping, but they show 631 total listings, 410 are whole-house, 208 are private-room, 13 are shared-room. Currently, the code regulates the private-room and I guess the shared-room, but does not regulate, does not allow the entire home. So for the entire home, we have 410 listings in the city. Some are just outside the corporate limits. So the exact number is not known from this source. But there is a fair amount of what they refer to as entire-home short-term rental listings. And the sources were Airbnb and VRBO that they use, just to share that bit of information. So we do have some data for the Raleigh area. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. VRDNA is a good source to, it's really the only source that I know of right now where you can pull sort of what's going on in your local area to understand the local market as it stands. Would you all like me to speak to the Wilmington case? I'll give you a really quick overview. It's a, and sort of somewhat complicated issue, but I'll try to break it down. We have a state law that requires, it's under the periodic inspection statutes that say basically you cannot, a local government cannot require a real property owner to register a rental property with the local government. So local rental registries are prohibited. So if someone had a long-term rental, you couldn't require a list of all those, everyone to sign up and join some kind of rental registry for long-term rentals, just like you can't do that for short-term rentals or vacation rentals. So Wilmington's permits used the word registers throughout. So it'd say that homeowner has to register the whole-house rental, and then every year it needs to update the registry. And so the judge picked up on that, and the lawsuit was challenged because it was using the term "register", and the judge said that the state law clearly preempted the city's requirement that short-term rental owners must register their rental property with the city annually because no local government may adopt or enforce any ordinance that would require any owner or manager of rental property to register a rental property. So the judge struck down their entire short-term rental ordinance on the basis that it was preempted by the state statute and the rental registry was illegal. But the interesting part of the case was that the entire statute was struck down, not just the registration requirement. So there was part of that permit that includes like a 400-foot separation between short-term rental properties or an overall 2% cap on short-term rentals in certain zones. There was a lottery for permits and amortization for remitted uses and other, you know, related typical short-term rental regulations. So when the judge struck it down on the basis that it violated state law, we're not entirely sure why it didn't let the other provisions of that ordinance stand, like the 2% cap, which has sort of left a question mark above everyone who wants to regulate short-term rentals' heads. Like, was the entire thing illegal? All of the regulations within that ordinance or literally just the rental registry requirement? How Raleigh can get around this, a lot of people think, oh my gosh, you can't require any kind of rental registry. We can't regulate short-term rentals. We, you know, there's no reason to move forward. But what you're doing is you're not adopting a rental registry. You're requiring a zoning permit to regulate the short-term rentals. And as long as your regulations fall within the local zoning authority, there's nothing in the state statutes that prohibits local governments from regulating short-term rentals through their zoning authority, right now at least. So the way we're sort of getting around the, getting ourselves, getting local governments' authority to regulate short-term rentals is through zoning and a zoning permit. But don't use the word "register" or "registry" anywhere, which you guys don't do. I read your ordinance. So you're good to go there. That's sort of, that's some bolts of the Wilmington case.
Okay, thank you. I have another follow-up. Has any of your work or research kind of zoomed in to more of the micro level? Because from all the research that I think a lot of us have done, as well as these articles that you mentioned, as well as some additional articles, it does appear that short-term rental is much more of, is much more predominant in certain areas of the city, either because they were geographic, because of where they're geographically located, because of the cost of the housing, or both. And curious if you have any additional information on that because the impact that it has on the broader city of Raleigh is much different than it does have on certain neighborhoods in the city.
Right. And I think that's just going to be sort of the nature of the beast of short-term rentals, right? People are going to be attracted to the touristy zip codes, maybe the ones that are closer downtown or give you, if you're going to come in for a wedding and it's more likely to be maybe hosted in downtown Raleigh. The way, if you want to avoid the neighborhood, certain neighborhoods from becoming, you know, full of short-term rentals, I think one of the only ways to do it is to impose some kind of cap on the density or the, like Wilmington did, the 2% cap of homes and a zoning permit that could be used as a short-term rental. We don't have answers in the court yet whether that would be upheld because you're also telling people what they can do with their private property, and is that an infringement on private property rights? At the same time, because these are residential structures. But then at the same time, there's another argument to be made that full-time short-term rentals are a commercial use of property, so they should be subject to regulation more like a commercial property and perhaps be limited in residential neighborhoods. So, long story short, you could take steps to decrease in amount of short-term rentals by zoning districts. Whether or not that will stand long-term, we don't know. But it's definitely a common way to approach short-term rental regulation by limiting it by zoning district.
Okay, thank you. Have you had any experience researching? You know, it seems like a lot of cities that are having a little bit more success, they've actually, instead of limiting percent of housing, they're limiting number of days per year.
Yeah. That is another option. So right now, your permit sort of reads to allow all types of short-term rentals. And I was thinking that that was your overall goal. But you could sort of categorize types of short-term rentals. And there's the home stay where the person's onsite, the owner's onsite, and then where the long-term occupant's onsite. And then like a unhosed short-term rental would be perhaps if someone goes away for the weekend and, you know, temporarily rents out their house, and you get like up to, they have to be onsite up to 180 days a year so that you're cutting the time that they're allowed to rent the short-term rental. So we usually call those unhosed. The person gets, the renters get the whole house, the guests get the whole house. But really, it is the primary residence of the person who lives there. They're only temporarily absent here and there, and they're going to make a little bit of extra money while they go to New York for the weekend. And then there's the dedicated short-term rentals. And those are the properties that are used as full-time short-term rentals. There is no primary occupant at that address. And so a lot of cities regulate those three categories differently and either then allow the dedicated short-term rentals only in certain zoning districts, like a downtown or district or commercial district, where obviously there are fewer of those properties existing anyways. And then would maybe allow unhosed short-term rentals in residential areas, but that means that the owner has to be onsite for X number, 180 days, something like that, so they're not a dedicated rental. And that way, they're letting people rent their houses out, but they're limiting the amount of sort of quasi-hotels that are existing throughout. Basically, you just define those as different types and then choose the zoning districts where they're allowed and the certain regulations that apply to them. Like Fort Collins does that, like Colorado Springs. There are a lot of communities that do break it down like that.
Okay, thank you. It looks like Commissioner O'Haver had a question.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, can you remind me of the three? So you have the hosted STR where they're going to New York. So you have the hosted STR where they're going to New York City for the weekend. You have sort of the full-time or unhoseded STR. What was the third category that you said?
So there's the one that's like a home stay where the person remains on site. They're not in New York City. And then there's the unhoseded, you, you can use different terms for these. The unhoseded's where the guy goes to New York City for the weekend. And then the dedicated would be, you know, full-time dedicated short-term rental.
Thank you.
And I have, I can happily share data with you on which cities are doing that and that's sort of their caps and how, how they organize that. I have all that. If anyone's interested in me sending that out after the meeting.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Miller?
Yes, could you clarify how North Carolina's laws that restrict owner occupancy would impact our ability to regulate the unhoseded versus dedicated short-term rental?
North Carolinians that restrict what? I'm sorry. Owner occupancy?
Yes, we have limitations on what we're allowed to require in terms of owner occupancy.
You cannot require the, the owner to be on site. So let's, you, in, in your short-term rental ordinance, you should, it could be a permanent resident would be more the term that you want to say. So if you're having a home stay and someone lives at that, that residence, the regulation should not say, oh, the owner must be on site while the rooms are rented out. It just has to be a a permanent resident of the address, but not an owner. So you'll want to avoid using the term owner throughout your regulations to avoid that kind of issue with the owner occupancy. So primary resident is fine. Somebody who has a long-term lease could therefore be allowed to rent or use the short-term rental, the property as a short-term rental. You cannot impose the requirement that is actually the owner who is on site.
Thank you.
I have another question that's maybe a different lens on that. It, are there any that, you know, I understand a permanent resident versus not? I guess when you have a permanent resident, there's also like, whether they are there or are not there, you know, utilizing the full space or not. But then what about if, if there's just a, like a room of a house, kind of like the home stay? Like, how does that fit into those three categories? The hosted is it's like, basically it's not, like, you know, the, the way it seems like it's really, you know, we're trying to navigate this whole house versus not whole house. And I think that a lot of it is the idea of people buying it as a commercial property and it, running it as a business versus not.
Okay.
And so curious to hear a few more kind of variables that differentiate, you know, someone quote unquote, sharing their house and making some extra income versus say, a company buying 25 of these in a city and running it as a business.
Right. So the renting of a room, I think, I'm just going to look at your ordinance really quick.
Which, which I, you know, right now we have a home stay in place, but I don't believe it's.
But you're, you're getting rid of the home stay regulations, right? To replace them with this?
Yes, but, but we're, part of our goal here is to find more variables because the current text as written, you know, I don't want to speak for everybody, but from our last meeting was, is not satisfactory.
Okay.
And so we're trying to use data to really understand the impact on our community. And I know personally, I, I look at the data on AirDNA and I see that it is, it is having a significant impact on very specific neighborhoods in Raleigh. And, and so we're trying to be very, at least I personally am trying to be very thoughtful. And I know that the conversations we had prior is that we're trying to be very thoughtful about this.
Okay. So right now you have in your section four of your ordinance for the fee structure, that you're differentiation, differentiating between partial and whole house short-term rentals for the, your fees. And that was one of my key questions for y'all because you're, in your definitions, you just defined short-term rentals basically any rental that's 30 days or, or less. There's nothing about what a partial or a whole house is. And I, I was curious as to what the term partial means to you because that's important. If the, the, the reason behind the use of the word partial is that you really mean there has to be an owner on site. That's a different meaning than partial, like, I don't know, a house has five bedrooms and only two of them are allowed to be rented, but the owner's still gone. What would be the point of that, of partial rental there? It's either basically a whole house rental or a home stay rental where somebody's there. Or, I mean, or you can do that, that's three sections with the homes, the home stay and then the unhoseded with the guys in New York for the weekend and the dedicated. But to differentiate between part of the house and then a whole house for your fees didn't really make sense to me. If you want to limit people from coming in and buying up a bunch of properties and using them as dedicated short-term rentals, I think probably the way to go is questionable, but maybe limits the issuance of zoning permits to one per business entity or per person as, as a way to ensure that that doesn't happen.
Okay. I mean, yeah, I mean, it does, I, I do know in the, in the real estate world, people use single-purpose LLCs, I feel like maybe for specifically for, to get around things like that, but.
Right, they definitely do. And then they just form a new LLC and then they get a new permit for that LLC and you can get stuck track, tracking them down and then they change the name. But there's no perfect way to necessarily enforce this. I mean, you, you could say, or no dedicated short-term rentals in whatever districts like Oakwood and Five Points or Falls in or whatever districts you wanted to choose. And then allow the unhoseded short-term rentals and the home stays. It's really up to y'all what you want to do as far as what type of short-term rental to allow and where to allow them. And that's going to be a decision that is hard to make. As written, you're, you're allowing everything everywhere. And I don't know if that's your intent and I can help you clarify that, if that's not your intent.
No, I think I, I, I really want to thank you for, you know, your input and, and kind of feedback and everything. I think this is super helpful and is a good primer for, I think maybe if my other commissioners are ready to kind of bring it back to the table and chat a little bit. You know, we, we really appreciate your time. And I don't know if you're able to, to hang on the line or we, you know, it sounds like we, we, we have your contact and can follow up with additional questions or even maybe third-party review and things like that, just to get some additional feedback, but, but really sincerely appreciate your input and expertise on that.
Sure. I want to, can I circle back to one thing you mentioned earlier before you guys talk? Because I think it could help.
Yeah.
You, you talked about, you saw in other jurisdictions like Asheville, limiting the number of rooms that are rented. That is only related to a home stay generally. So that's when the person's on site. So you would say one bedroom less than the total number of bedrooms in the house because presumably the owner has to stay in the house in one of the bedrooms. You don't usually have whole-house rentals where you limit the number of bedrooms because I don't know what the point necessarily would be of doing that, except to maybe limit parties. But more often and more common is an occupancy cap of two people per bedroom and maybe plus two additional people total in the unit excluding children under the age of 12, something like that. It's generally, people regulate through occupancy, but not the number of rooms as a means to sort of cut down on overcrowding and partying and ensuring safety. So just something to think about there.
Okay, great, great. Well, thank you very much, Rebecca. Yeah, we, we really do appreciate it. And, and I do think whether or not you're able to stay on the line, I, I think we would appreciate a follow-up. I think you offered a follow-up of some information and data and facts from some other communities and articles and stuff. And so whatever you're able to share, I think if you get it to your point of contact and they'll be able to disseminate it to you.
Sure, I'll stay on the line with you guys for like 15 more minutes. How about, and then if you have any questions that come up, I'll help you.
Great, great. Thank you so much.
No problem.
All right. With that, I want to bring it back to the table and kind of just have our little internal conversation. Anybody want to kick it off? Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. I have done some research as well since our last meeting. And I know that one of the concerns that, that I have and that, that I know that my commissioners share is the housing shortage in Raleigh and that that has become even more extreme, especially over the past 12 and 24 months. And trying to figure out why that's happening and, and how some of these big policy changes that we're making might affect some of that. So I did some additional research as well. And the, maybe I'll start sort of just outlining the problem. Year over year for 2019 versus 2020, our home, our supply of homes on the market is down 80%. We have one-fifth of the homes available year over year for the past, in terms of what is actually available, and it just keeps decreasing. And we're trying to figure out what's happening. And last year, I guess starting a couple of years ago, there was a rise in a phenomenon called the iBuyer, which is short for institutional buyers, that was really founded in Phoenix. And that's where essentially real estate technology companies and investment companies from private equity firms and REITs, and then also resellers come in and they tried to buy up specific homes within their investment parameters, what they call their buy boxes. And in 2019, I'm looking at a TBJ article right now. They found that Raleigh has actually, just even though this was born in Phoenix, Raleigh has just, in 2019, became the number one city in the nation for the iBuyer market share. In 2019, iBuyers, according to this article, bought 7%, accounted for 7% of all new home purchases in Raleigh, where about 1 in 15 homes. And then since then, in 2020, that number has actually increased to 23% of home purchases in our market are being purchased by these iBuyers. Of that percentage, there is a portion, I think it's somewhere around a third, that's being bought by resellers that are just sort of, you know, the, the Mark Spains and the, the sort of buy any house and then they flip it. But the, that leaves the remaining 50-plus percent that are being purchased by these private investment companies that are taking advantage of the fact that capital is incredibly cheap right now. And if they can, you know, rent it out at all to, to capitalize or just to, to pay the interest, the very modest interest on some of these things, they're just looking to ride up the market. And right now, 2% of all homes in Raleigh are owned by these institutional buyers. But I was actually speaking with some of the folks that, that are on the brokerage side on behalf of these iBuyers and what their targeted goals are for Raleigh. Because again, Raleigh has been the target for iBuying for the entire nation. And their goal is actually to increase their owned market share to 20% or more of all home, of all homeownership for our, our housing market. And so, you know, you can just sort of, as, home buying is very inelastic in terms of price. People are going to need a home regardless of what the housing price is. So when you have a new buyers come in, even to take up 2% of the existing homeownership like they have so far in the past two years, that can have enormous impact on housing prices. And we're already seeing that it does, that it has. If anybody has been in the housing market and seen just how crazy it is. If it's something like 20% or more, that's a giant crisis. And, and what that would essentially do, which would make sense for a lot of these investors is to, it would then of course drive, instead of just having, being okay with a modest increase in five to six percent a year with their cheap capital right now, if they actually buy up more of the market, then obviously they're buying up more of the supply, which would increase the value of their investments even more once they hit a critical threshold. So this is something that, and it's an overall concern that we need to keep in mind whenever we are looking at what to do, what, any sort of sweeping policy changes for the city. Because these, you know, the, Ms. Badgett was just telling us about some of the statistics for other cities. And I think she said that in Venice Beach, I believe that it was, 12%, 12.5% of the houses, housing stock was available to short-term rentals and that that was causing a crisis for housing prices and, and for housing affordability in the area. In terms of how it would impact housing prices in the, the city, you know, you, sort of a, a simple reading of economics, if we're taking houses out of the housing market, then we are, and putting them, turning them into commercial properties, we are decreasing the housing stock. And then when you decrease demand, we're, sorry, when you decrease supply and demand remains stagnant or in fact is actually growing in this area, then the prices are obviously going to start to skyrocket. And so one of my biggest concerns is to try and figure out sort of what do we, I mean, throughout everything that we're working on is how do we increase housing supply in Raleigh? But then also, how do we not get it eaten up by a bunch of, by these iBuyers essentially? And what can we do about that? Or at least how can we remove some of the incentives for them to do that? And so one of my big concerns on these short-term rentals is that it actually increases the incentives for iBuyers to come into this market and to buy up houses as quickly as they can. In terms of which houses they're buying in their buy boxes, the, the focus of most of these buyers is on single-family homes, condos and townhouses built after 1960 that are for sale between 100 and $450,000. And as long as the, the properties are within their investment parameters, then in several cases, in many cases it's sight unseen or they can, if they're familiar with the market, just coming in with a cash offer. And even if it's 10% above asking, just coming in and eating everything up. So to not just, so it would affect our housing supply overall throughout the entire city, but then obviously also targeting all of our affordable housing supply. And so that it's going to be a concern and a challenge that we have to face as a city on what to do about the fact that we are number one in the nation for this and that they're trying to increase. And so specifically, how do we meet the goals of, it, it, so, so basically that is going to intersect with turning our housing supply into commercial properties in a meaningful way. So the challenge is not, is for us, that I see is there certainly are benefits to having short-term rentals. And I know that we're tasked with finding good, a good tech change that can provide for short-term rentals in the city. So how do we further the goals of having short-term rentals in the city without creating incentives to have more, to have more iBuyers come in and decrease our housing stock? And I've got a couple, I've been looking at over a dozen studies that have been performed in, in different cities on the impact of short-term rentals and some of the legislation that could account for some of that. I've spoken offline with, I think at least briefly with all of the commissioners in this committee meeting. So that's no surprise to them. We've been sharing some articles. I think one way that, the, the key way that we found to do that is to limit the number of total days per year, that whole home unhosed or dedicated short-term rental, or basically just to. just to limit the total number of days per year that a house can be rented or subject to a short-term rental. And if that number is, is, is small enough, then it can still provide for additional income to people that go to New York or go away for the holidays or want to make some additional income off their property without actually making it profitable for some of these iBuyers to come in and buy up this housing stock. So when we started to look at some of those specific numbers, several cities have pointed to ninety, having a ninety-day cap on the total number of days that a house can be rented. When we started looking at some of the cap rates, capitalization rates on how to make a short-term rental profitable for Raleigh homes in particular, at ninety days per year, it probably still could be, that cap rate with the current price of capital probably still is, would, would make it a profitable target for these iBuyers. But if we limit it to sixty days, that seems to be a sort of more magical threshold where the cap rate may not work anymore. And so it would no longer be in sort of the financial interest of an iBuyer to come in and buy up lots of houses solely to use them for full-time short-term rentals. That's a lot of information that I thought I'd sort of dump at the beginning and curious for feedback from the rest of my commissioners and other thoughts and concerns.
Thanks, Commissioner Miller. It, it did bring up one question that I had for Rebecca, if she's still on the line. I just, I was curious how, like, what kind of language is used, how language is used in terms to say, apply that, that cap? It sounds like that might fall into the unhosted versus hosted category and that we might not have dedicated at all. But I was just kind of curious to hear thoughts on that positioning, perhaps just kind of quickly before you head out, if you're still, still with us.
Yes, that would fall into the unhosted category. And then as far as language within your definition section, you would just define it as a short-term rental where the primary resident has to remain on-site for, you know, X number of days. And usually it's high enough that you have limited the amount of time that the rental is, it can be available to about ninety days per year. So you have to be on-site, I think, two hundred and seventy days a year. And then that leaves the other, I don't know if that adds up to exactly ninety, but the other ninety days open for you to make your property available. But I have some language and ordinances that kind of covers that sort of definition. But yes, then you would say then thereby limiting them to the, having to be on, on-site for ninety days or everything except ninety days. You've excluded your dedicated short-term rentals because that would be now not a recognized overnight or lodging use.
And, and I guess following that up, how, how have you seen successful enforcement?
Enforcement is always a very hard problem. Mostly it's just based on neighbors and people in the community sending complaints to the zoning administrators and allowing them to investigate it. It's, another way to enforce is to issue a zoning permit number along with your zoning permits and then to require them to be posted on the online advertising platforms. And that way, if you do a scan randomly of the houses that are available for rent, if they don't have a, a permit number listed, you know that they've either not registered or they're not complying with that. And that's one way to just key you into initial violations of perhaps not having a zoning permit. And then, you know, if there's overcrowding or occupancy or noise issues, it's either the police or neighbors who are going to be giving you the tips.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Well, thank you, Commissioner Miller, for all that. I think it's like really, really helpful data and information. And I think it, it also, you mentioning low interest rates, that's something I know that's really driving so much refinancing and purchasing. And it lowers the requirements on the backend for any sort of return. So, you know, I, I definitely am very interested in, in seeing how we could maybe apply that approach for, to this policy. I was also just curious what the Venn diagram is of that relative to hosted and how that's classified. Like if, if Ms. Smith down the street has, you know, an extra room and she wants to rent it out, like how that, like what that falls into, what bucket that might fall into? If that's just hosted because someone's on-premise? And therefore, if someone's on-premise, there's, you know, I guess assumingly accountability and not a whole handful of people rolling into someone's house and throwing a party. Nor is someone buying it and having it sit there and only renting it sporadically to cover their return. Really, and because I guess my, my whole lens, I know, and, and I love to hear from Commissioner Fox or Mo Haver, but, you know, I, I feel like this should, at, at this point in where we're at in Raleigh, one, we've seen it displacing a lot of people. That's apparent just by looking at the Air DNA map. And we want to, I think, restrict that at all, like to, to every degree. I also think that in general, across the city of Raleigh, we just don't want this to impact our housing quantity. Like I, I feel like this is a commercial use. If, you know, if it, if it removes one unit of living that currently is there full-time, then I feel like it's, it's going against most of the goals we have in our community, most of the needs we have in our community. So, I know that's, kind of open the floor for other thoughts or feedback. Commissioner Fox?
I'm interested in pursuing this option of defining the categories of short-term rentals. I don't know where everyone else is sitting on that. I think there's a lot of opportunity there to fine-tune and tweak some of the impacts that we do not want to promote. Are you guys able to hear me, Mark? I know you just made the can't hear you sign.
It, it's a little weird.
Okay. So in addition to being interested in those three categories of short-term rentals, I'm also interested in talking a little bit more about caps on density. I did notice the text as it exists right now puts a cap on density in multi-family projects, but there's no cap proposed for single-family. I know there are some challenges in terms of how you define an area to determine what that percentage is. But I wanted to just check in perhaps with Mark or Justin just to see what had been reviewed as an option for the, the density issue.
Well, unless Justin has something else. I know that we, we haven't really explored a cap on density for single-family homes. It's really been more for those multi-unit developments like your, your condo complexes or your apartment complexes where you have several units with, on, on one site. So, single-family detached or attached structures or something that we haven't explored a cap, but we certainly could do that.
Yeah, this is Justin. The, the limit in for multi-unit living was a, the original draft of this ordinance did not have, did not allow for any home stays in apartment settings. The addition of that language was directed from council. We, we did not explore, as Mark said, caps in residential zones or residential areas. I do believe one of the peer cities we looked at, I want to say maybe Austin, Texas, did regulate them, I think on a census tract basis. But that was the only one in our research that I recall having any types of limits in, in that way in residential areas.
All right. And one clarification, Commissioner Fox, around density for residential areas in more clarity. Are, are you saying like for adults versus ten adults, that kind of density or?
No, percentage of permits that can be, that can be allowed in a certain, let's just say, neighborhood. Versus the occupancy, which is the number of people per location.
That makes sense, yes.
This is Eric Hodge. If I could add, earlier versions of this ordinance, Roberta may recall, had spacing requirements. That's the closest thing we had to a density per se. But it would have limited how close they could be to one another. But that was the only thing that was sort of along this line that you're asking about. But that was several versions ago that were never adopted, probably many, probably five years ago, maybe even.
Following up on that, Eric, can you remind me, do you remember what that, what that distance was?
Um, I'd have to look, but I'm going to say it was like six hundred feet or something, but I can, I can check.
Commissioner? This is Keegan. I just wanted to let you know that there was one member of the public who did have a question for the board, or excuse me, for the committee. So I can unmute them at any time. Just let me know if you'd wish to.
Okay, okay. We're, we're happy to, to, to hear from the public.
Okay, one moment. Okay, just unmuted Elena, I believe it is.
Hi. Oh, you can't see me?
No, but we can hear you.
We can hear you. Yep.
Okay, well, thank you. So my question is, the ordinance as it's written now has a list of zones where you cannot have short-term rentals. Does that mean at this point, anything out of those zones can host a short-term rental? Do you understand my question?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I'll, I'll leave that up to Eric Hodge, but I, I believe it's, it's not, it's not by, it's not by right allowed. But I'll, I'll leave that up to either Justin or Eric.
This is Mark. It's, it's allowed as a limited use within those stated zoning districts in Section One. If it's not, if it's not among those stated districts, then it's not allowed.
And it's not allowed, okay. But so is, is that ordinance going to be rewritten after this meeting that will be effective January? I mean, there'll be some changes, correct?
That is up to this board.
Right, right. But what I'm asking is there'll probably be some changes after this meeting and that would be in for 2021?
We, we, we have not have another meeting this year. So if we, but we do have a deadline to report this to city council. And so we will move forward today and try and figure out what our path is. But even if city council were to get it before the end of the year, it still would be probably a month or two because of the holidays that they would be able to hear it, either agree with us or not, set a public hearing and, and then vote on it to become law. So it's still probably a, I'd say shortest term would be a three to five-month process. Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, team in Raleigh.
I would also say that the, the adoption effective, the effective date of this is thirty days after it's adopted. That's what, how it's stated currently in the draft ordinance. Unless that's modified by the, by the city council, the, it would be thirty days from the date of adoption in which this would go into effect.
Great, thank you for that.
Can you say anything?
Okay, my, my partner is here with me. His name is Lance. He wants to ask something.
Yeah, can you say anything about the fact that it, your ordinance is contrary to the state law? You know, that says you don't have any, you don't, you can't put restrictions like this on individual properties?
You privately own properties?
Yeah. There's a state law that was passed that says that you can't, that, that no one in Raleigh or in the state can put restrictions on things like short-term rentals and things like that, which I'm sure everyone more concerned with like places at the beach and stuff.
I think he's referring to the rules that Ms. Badgett spoke to, which say we can't require a registry, which was about the Wilmington case that
Right.
were made aware of earlier. In response to Ms. Fox's question, TC fourteen sixteen, which was denied as a short-term rental proposal back in twenty sixteen, proposed a four-hundred-foot spacing between, a minimum four-hundred-foot spacing between short-term rentals.
Saying between, in other words, two houses next door to each other, if they're less than four hundred feet, you can't.
Keegan, are, are you able to mute our members of the public? Thanks.
Yes, I just did. Yeah.
Thanks. So, you know, I've, we've heard some about if, if allowing for a, you know, I'm kind of zooming out to the policy level so that we could figure out and make sure that we have our bullet points in line and figure out what the best path forward is. You know, I, I think that, you know, it sounds like have had, have heard no, no one kind of pushing back on limiting how many days per year a full residence could be permitted in, as short-term rental. It also sounds like we're curious in how in how certain areas might be more prone to this, how, how that could be controlled as well. I'm trying to think about a few other policy factors. You know, it sounds like we were given some good language from Rebecca today about hosted and unhosted. You know, I guess, I'm trying to do some of the like logic breakdown and feel like if we have a max of sixty days of unhosted, then I, I wonder if, if that, you know, it, it seems like that would really kind of stop the more predatory invest, investing around this. And so I just am curious if, if, like what impact the, the density, any sort of density restrictions might have? And so I just am curious if if, like, what impact the the density, any sort of density restrictions might have, or more so proximity might have. If if that is, you know, if at least in through our lens is achieving the idea of not removing housing from the market and making housing less desirable for investors to solely purchase it for short-term rental. But I I'm I'm open to kind of thoughts around how that could maybe be some added security or something like that as well. You know, I I'd really be curious to see how some of these other communities, the language that they use that supports this hosted/unhosted methodology, I it does sound like the idea of using a zoning permit number on the platforms also makes sense. I I do know that I I feel like I don't know when it was, if it was in this round of conversations, at some point someone mentioned that I think some of the platforms restrict any sort of municipal permit in an image, but I don't, I doubt they can that they can restrict you having a permit number in your description of your property on their marketing platform. I'm talking out loud. But I think the idea of that accountability and the that idea of public accountability, I think, can really help through the enforcement. I I'm not a a huge fan of like neighborly enforcement, but I think that having some accountability and figuring out a way to do it in a sensitive way to, you know, let's not say owners or renters, just like long-term residents. I I know when I was in New Orleans recently, I saw little placards in the window that notified folks that that was a permitted permitted place for short-term rental, and they had different colors based off of what they were permitted as. I don't know if that's something that that could be possible. Again, just trying to talk out loud so that we can nail down some of these policy points. But I think there's the policy points, and then I think there's the path forward. I know that we have another text change on the docket for tonight, and that we don't currently have a text change meeting in December. And so also want to just keep that in mind. Is this the, I believe the termination date is the, or sorry, the date that we have to get it to council by is the 21st of December? I don't know if council is meeting, meeting anytime after that. Mr. Holland, do you have any feedback on the actual timeline?
Let's see. Well, the you're correct. The date, the deadline for a PC recommendation is December the 21st. As far as dates for city council. Well, they'll have the the December 1st meeting. Their second meeting would be December the 15th, and as far as I know, they're still on schedule to have that meeting. So but this there would, there would be one meeting at the planning commission prior to the 15th, but we would, we would still have to report it out. It would be reported out, I guess, or the timeline would allow us to set a public hearing date on December the 15th, which would probably put it at the first meeting in January, or would put in the first meeting in January.
Okay, so but otherwise, we would have to request an extension.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. Is it, you know, I guess it seems like to get some of some updated language from you and your team, it seems like a tall order to turn that around and for us to review it to be able to make a recommendation to planning commission. Is it true?
I guess I guess it would all depend on the level of corrections that need to be made. If if they're relatively minor corrections and we can get those done, we could probably get them into a board docs document in time for the meeting on on next Tuesday. But then again, it all depends on the the level of changes that need to be made and any type of research that we would have to do to make sure that language is good.
You've indicated that there's an interest in creating categories, hosted, unhosted, and dedicated. Are those the three categories the committee is settling on?
I I don't think that dedicated would be one, because I think dedicated is is 100% year-round short-term rental, which I think is what we're we're trying to move away from.
Okay, so you'd be looking at hosted and unhosted. Where hosted is basically the home stay.
Yep.
And the unhosted is the entire dwelling.
Yeah. But 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 for a max number of days per year.
For both?
For for the for the unhosted.
For the unhosted. So you're talking about adding a standard, just so I understand, modifying the definition to include, to set out those two categories. And then we would carry that forward to section four, where we deal with the fees, so that we would have a hosted fee and an unhosted fee. And then adding to the use standards, a paragraph I that would cap the number of days, and this is what I wanted to clarify, are you wanting to cap the number of days that the property is available for rent for a short-term rental, or the number of days that it's actually rented? I think available for rent may be easier to monitor if you're looking on the websites. But I just, I wanted to clarify that question. Somebody may only have, you know, a rental for 60 days, but they've got it available for rent six months. I'm trying to clarify what your desire is, because if those are the changes you're headed towards, I think they are changes that could be made fairly quickly once we have the committee's direction to get them to the meeting on the 24th. That's all I was getting at. I was trying to, unless there's other changes that you haven't expressed.
Well, and and I think I, you know, I at least that the language about, and I think this just reinforces what what we're a little bit, we just want to be cognizant of, is the idea of of the permanent resident. I like, I personally like the idea of there being a minimum number of days that a permanent resident occupies it. Now, I don't know how that that falls in line with state statute, but but that idea to me, it's like, okay, permanent resident, minimum number of days, 270, 320, that is, that that still warrants that property as a residential unit, as a dwelling unit. Because I guess the only other thing that I I guess I'd want to perhaps play defense on is is if someone, you know, buys some big house and can make enough money. I mean, I, we think at writ large, it's not possible, but we we don't want someone to buy a house and just rent it for 60 days of the year and it sit empty for 320 either. And so so I, you know, personally, I like that idea of having a little bit of accountability with it tying it to housing. But I'm open to hearing other thoughts from other other committee members. Commissioner Miller?
Yes, I I agree with you on that. I was making a list of the changes to the text change. So I guess creating two categories, a partial house and whole house, or hosted and unhosted. With partial, with a hosted or partial house rental, no limit on the number of days rented per year. But I guess the requirement that it's hosted, right, the requirement that they're a primary resident be onsite. And then with a whole house, limiting the number of days available for rent to 60 days and providing a primary resident requirement, I'd say for 180 days, if it's, you know, if if we have both, I think that covers that issue. Because people can travel or go to school or that kind of thing. And then, so that would be sort of the main difference between the two categories. And then also adding a requirement that a permit number be posted on the listing. If staff can think through logistically, if if that makes sense to them. Also adding a placard on site, perhaps visible, posted in a window or on the door with the permit information. The only other change that I saw is in the enforcement side under the definition of verified violation. It says that your, under revocation of the permit, you'll get revoked if you have two or more verified violations. And so I would want to create an exception that you can, that you'll get your permit revoked upon the first verified violation in terms of the exception to the number of days rented or the primary residence requirement. And then the fifth item on the geographical density limits, just wanted to see where we landed on that one. But do the first four sound right to everyone else?
I think so. I think so. You you said 60 days available and 180 days required for a full-time resident?
If I could object, right now, under home stay, what we say is a dwelling unit that is occupied by the resident domiciled at the location, and then we define domicile. We do not place a, you only have one domicile, okay? You only have one home, you know, where you are truly domiciled. And so are you wanting to switch that with a number of days which will be harder to enforce or prove than what's the person's address on his or her driver's license, or where they registered to vote? There's certain ways you can prove domicile a lot easier than someone counting how many days they've been on site. That's going to be a, an enforcement nightmare. And so I would encourage consideration of keeping the language we have and the definition of home stay, tweaking it somewhat to fit with this type of text change. But if you're wanting to create that hosted versus unhosted category, use what we already have in the code for home stay for the hosted. Just my thoughts.
Okay, Commissioner O'Haver?
David, is that going to minimize or prohibit the concern that Matt brought up about the house being vacant? I mean, isn't there a way these iBuyers, LLCs, there's all sorts of ways around this for them to be listed as a domicile, but the house sit vacant for, for they're going to say 60 days. It's going to sit there for 305 days with nobody in it. So does that definition of domicile, does that limit that? Does that limit our exposure to that?
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. You're talking, you're you're mixing the categories there, I think. I think the 60-day availability is the cap that is being suggested for unhosted.
Right.
If if there's a resident domiciled on the on the property in question, it is hosted. It is a home stay. It is not an unhosted situation. So you wouldn't have the 60-day limit. I believe what Commissioner Miller suggested was for the hosted, there would be no cap on number of days the property is available for short-term rental. I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth.
No, that's what I asked the notes I've got, hosted, the owner's home site, unhosted, they leave for the weekend. I'm just saying that one of Matt's concerns that he's articulated is that the house sits empty for 305 days if we're allowing it to be 60 days rented. I'm just, my question is, I don't know the answer. Does the definition of domicile versus, because Rebecca, I wrote the notes, Rebecca mentioned that specifically, that that the owner be at the house for a certain number of days versus just using it as a definition. If it works, great. I just, I don't know that. Other ones are wanted for an LLC to be domiciled there, but still sit. I'm pretty sure I have one up the street here for me. It's the same thing. It sits empty for days and days and days and days, and then someone's there for like two weeks or three weeks, and then it sits empty for days and days and days. So I'm just curious if that definition will cover that.
Well, the, again, the domicile, domicile is just dealing with the hosted, the short-term. That's not, that's not getting into the one where it would. If you want to say it can only be available for rent for 60 days, there's no way you can force someone to live in a house. And so that's a whole nother enforcement headache you're you're going to lose on, is to say someone else has to be in that house. Because we can't require an owner occupancy. The only person you can identify would be the owner, and you can't force the owner to live on the property. That's a violation of state law. And so there's, there's no way, I know of, to prohibit someone from allowing their property to sit vacant for 10 out of 12 months of the year.
I thought I wrote a note, I don't know if Rebecca's still on, she's probably not, but we might want to ask her, because I wrote somewhere, I thought she was talking about North Carolina, maybe she was talking about in some other state, that the owner had to be, I wrote it down, owner onsite 270 days, but maybe I've got the note homework that was in another state.
This is Eric Hodge. If I could add, earlier versions had a requirement for a resident manager to live on site, not necessarily the owner. So you could be renting the place, you know, for a year as a as a tenant and live there, and then rent out rooms therein while you're present, or potentially for 60 days while you're gone. That, I think that might be what Blaney was speaking to, and maybe maybe Mr. O'Haver, but the the resident manager component, not owner requirement.
And I guess that I heard from Rebecca was less of an owner, but a but more of there being a permanent resident, whether that's a renter, whomever, because I I guess I also just see as things, as our housing market shifts, it's like, say, someone leaves and you're, and someone who has a rental is trying to rent it, but has some, it's maybe some staging furniture or something and wants to rent it for a month in between tenants or something like that to cover some cost. I guess I was just, not that that I can't imagine that being a huge need, but just thinking about the, you know, rental housing being half of what it is that we do, just thinking about like how this could be a benefit to folks. You know, as well. So but um, but yeah, it sounds like it is hard. Because I I totally hear what you're saying, Brian, like, I mean, I understand that you can't force someone to occupy their house, but if we are giving them a zoning permit for a special use of domicile, that you know, there there, you know, I I agree that there could be some way that it's like, well, if you're going to apply for this, then you have to meet us half, you know, meet us 75% of the way. You know. But it sounds like that might be be challenging, because I think the whole thing is like, yeah.
Go on, Matt. Keep going.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that that's what I think about. It's like, you know, say you rent a place, someone leaves early, they had to leave, leave the city. I know I I've had three friends who have had issues where they're trying to break their lease. You know, if they could short-term rent something for a month, it could have saved them a lot of money. And, um, you know, and it's, you know, I, I just see that a lot with a lot of my friends rent. Um, I dealt with that through college and then through early, uh, you know, kind of early professional life. And, and just like seeing it as this kind of incremental way to fill gaps. You know, I, I think there is value there because it's not impacting. But it might be too complex to really figure out. But, but I do feel like if someone's applying for one of these permits, there should be a way that, that, that they can't just let it sit there empty for 10 months. And I'd, I'd be curious. Yeah.
Yeah. So I, to back to David's point, I mean, enforcement on all of this is going to be a nightmare. So I don't want to start making decisions about enforcement nightmares because the whole thing's going to be a nightmare. I chaired the sign-in ordinance, that special committee. You're laughing, David, because you know what I'm getting ready to say. We went rounding around for months and months and months about the signage stuff and there's been zero enforcement of it. So I, I get it. We gotta put the best, I think, my opinion is we need to put the best text change and ordinance forward. To, to minimize the, the city's exposure and the community's exposure. The community's exposure, I guess I should say, um, to some of these, some of these issues. I guess my only other question for Blanny is, or maybe it's not for Blanny, maybe it's for David. But is, I, I understand it's 60 days available, but I mean, this isn't a beach town. It might be available to rent this weekend and no one rents it. We're gonna, we're gonna ding somebody for that. And again, maybe it gets back to this issue of how long it sits unrented. It might, those two things might not work in concert. I'm just curious what your thoughts were on that.
I, I know through some of the research I've done, um, you know, it's really the idea of say a teacher. It, it, it's there for light lifts where to, to help with folks. Like if they're traveling to see family, if they get sick. Um, a lot of the examples in a lot of other communities where teachers who have off during the summer. Can rent their place for a month or two to cover some of that cost, to support additional education or things like that. You know, people going on sabbatical, people traveling for family. You know, it's, it's really just supplemental, it's a supplement when you're, when you're away a few weeks a year. Is, is really where it seemed like the value came in other, in other communities.
Yeah, I think it gets down to whether or not it's a principal use or an accessory use. Uh, that the principal use is residential. And when someone is residing there as an accessory to their residence, they are renting it. Potentially while they're still there or for up to 60 days while they're not present. To speak to Mr. O'Haver, I don't think it's available for 60 days. I think it's utilized as a rental for 60 days. So you may always have your add-up, but if nobody's renting it, you know, those, those days are not counting against you. Ms. Ms. Miller can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what we're speaking to is that it's not used as a short-term rental. For more than 60 days in a calendar year.
Yeah, I was just for drafting purposes, wanting to know what, what the committee's intent was when. When 60 days was thrown out there, whether it was rental or whether it was available. And just saying that available may be easier to monitor. Based on their listings on these public websites. But, um, there's no requirement to. You're not going to know unless a neighbor knows that a property in their neighborhood is being used as an SDR. And they run a clock and determine how many days there's a different car there. I mean, that's how these things are going to be enforced. And so. It depends on whether you're looking at the listings to determine whether they've exceeded their cap you're wanting to impose. Or whether you're relying on neighbor complaints to determine whether or not they've exceeded the cap you've imposed. That's all. I just wanted to know which one you wanted us to put in the draft.
Commissioner Miller?
To clarify, I was interested in, in for those reasons and for the, to create some kind of real enforcement mechanism. Make it the six days available for rent, not actually rented. I guess we would have to say posted or something as opposed to just available.
And I, and I guess maybe a follow-up to that, I, you know, it sounds like Rebecca has a lot of useful information. And I, you know, I, it's so hard to make these decisions and talk through some of this logic. You know, I respond so much better to seeing other policies and wrap our head around it and translate it. So I just wonder if we can get our hands on a few, a few of these policies and language. Um, you know, and, and I guess asking that. I also am, am like knowing that, um, you know, I, I feel, I wonder if we should. Uh, if there'd be appetite for a 30-day extension or 45-day extension from, from council. Seeing as though that they won't even really be able to hear this until January anyway. Commissioner O'Haver?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it seems like we still, I, I'm with you. Um, this is an extremely complex issue. We've got new information. Blanny provided a lot of great information. I, I'm not sure what the rush is other than the fact that it's been in the hopper, I guess. But this does seem, especially after listening to Blanny's initial information that she shared. That we, we gotta kind of get this pretty close to getting it right. And if y'all are comfortable, I, I'll get in line. I'm not, but y'all are all smarter than me. So I would, I mean, I would, I would be happier with asking for an extension. And I guess I have one more question. I know we talked about this the last time. But if we go back and we look at the case information and the overview and purpose. It mentions that, um, this text change was initiated by city council March 3rd, 2020. As a result raised by council to allow more housing options within the city. And that's not really what we're talking about. And so I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. And that, I mean, I agree with everything that we've said today. But I'm not hearing that that's the purpose of what we're doing here. Am I missing something?
I think that that's.
This is, this is Mark. I'm sorry. I just used that terminology because that was the way the city council phrased it. So it may, it may not actually be the terminology. That's just the terminology that was used at the time when it was initiated.
Okay. I just, and I'm, again, I'm okay with everything we've said here today. I just want to make sure it's pretty black and white, so to speak, uh, in words. And so if that's not the direction we're heading or direction we're trying to get to, that makes me feel better.
Yeah. And, and I, and I, I appreciate that, um, kind of temperature check, uh, Brian. Because I, you know, I, I think that short-term rental was a much different thing even three years ago. And, you know, just housing in general has changed so much. And, um, and I think that, you know, we, it's, it's a crisis across the country. And I think that, you know, there are some benefits to short-term rental, you know. I have friends who live down in Wilmington and Wrightsville and they're like, well, we kind of need it because the population quintet. Or increases five or seven X or something insane. And it's like, that's a completely different economy. And they have their own issues with that. But, um, you know, in, for normal places, normal communities that don't see that sort of swell. You know, it's, you know, we're all facing significant housing shortages. And I think that, that, that that is, you know, as you said, that is our focus right now as a community. And even over the, since this COVID hit, it's, and with the, the, I just had no idea how much. Low interest rates would impact, have such an impact. And, you know, I think all of, all Blanny's information, like just straight up, this really backs that up too. And so, I mean, it's scary to think that there's these huge institutions that are buying swaths of housing. You know, it's, it's definitely daunting. And I think the more that we can get ahead of it, you know, the, the better we'll be as a community. So thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Miller?
To add to that, I'll be curious in the minutes. I want to make sure, um, cause I know that this has been in, in the works for a while. But a lot of this new information, I just want to make sure that it makes it into the minutes for the council to see. If the initial idea was to expand housing, um, this and. I looked at a dozen plus studies and it, in cities where this was allowed. And it of course had the exact opposite effect because removing houses from the housing supply produces housing. And, um, so this would, I just want to make that clear in the record when, when the council reviews this. And, and I may speak with them as well about some of that, but just wanted to make sure that that was reflected in the minutes. And so, and, and I had another idea on the domicile and 180-day question, but we can finish this topic first. So Commissioner O'Haver had his hand up.
I was just going to say, Blanny, can you just send that information into whoever's taking the minutes so that it's in there?
Sure thing. You can do that. Um, and just one last note from Mr. York when you're looking at this. I was looking at the current U D O definition of homestay and the domicile. Um, and there may actually be a way to use some of the same language. To create these same domicile requirements that essentially the dwelling unit must be occupied by a resident domicile at that location. Even if it's not, um, during the time that it is subject to the short-term rental. But that might be a way to, to look at that as well.
And just so I have clarity on what that, is, is that like something like a license or a utility bill or a lease? Or is that like what, what, what constitutes a domicile? I, I just have never heard that term before.
Domicile means a place where, the place where an individual has a true fixed permanent home. And principal establishment and to which place, whenever absent, the individual has the intention of returning. A resident may only have one domicile. So this says for homestay that a dwelling unit, um, a homestay has to, is, is defined as a dwelling unit. That is occupied by the resident domiciled at that location. Um, and then other requirements. And then it has an additional later use standard that says. A full-time resident homestay operator who is domiciled at the property shall be present the entire time. That the homestay lodger is staying at that property. So maybe that is just the portion that needs to be tweaked. To say that they obviously don't have to be there at the time that the homestay lodger. Is staying on the property or that the lodger, short-term lodger is staying on the property. But basically that, that, there might be a way to tweak it within there. And I, and I can defer to staff on, on how you might look at that option. Then, then we can get around the number of days as well.
And, and I guess maybe just as far as action items, um, you know, it, maybe it's following up with Rebecca. Cause she might be the path of, uh, the like lease resistance, what, to, to get some really good, some hands on, or our hands on. Some really good language, just to, around some of this, the logic that's been successful in other communities, particularly around limiting the days and stuff. That could help just hone, I think, some of this. But as far as, uh. Actions today. Do we, I guess, I'm not familiar with this smaller sub, I, I, I forget the smaller subcommittee standards. If we wanted to request an extension, do we do that here or at planning commission? We do it here, correct?
My understanding is you would refer it out, back out to, to the planning commission for the purposes of requesting an extension. Then once council grants the extension, you would either deal with it at the planning commission or refer it back to the committee. I believe that's the procedure.
Okay. And I guess we have. Trying to think, if we. If we refer it out, will it automatically, could it be the December? Um. I guess it doesn't really matter. Cause we don't have a text. I'm, I'm just trying to think about the implications if we hear it next week or in December. If we were to request that extension.
I'm not sure I understand your, if, if the committee refers it out to the planning commission today. It would go on the 24th agenda. Of the planning commission with whatever the committee's recommendation is. If the committee's recommendation is to request additional time from council. Then if the full planning commission agreed with that recommendation, then that would be presented to city council on December 1st. If planning commission took some other action, then it would just depend on what that other action was.
Okay. Gotcha. Gotcha. Well, then I, I guess I'm comfortable, uh, moving for, I guess maybe a 45-day extension. Uh, for TCA 20, uh, short-term rental. There's second. Uh, Commissioner O'Haver, second. I guess with, without a, can I do, can I do without objection here? Or?
Well, if you, if you'll just do a raising hands, I don't, I mean, we can all see.
Uh, could we do a raise of hands for, uh, in support of the extent, uh, the extension? All right. The motion passes unanimously four to zero.
Uh, Commissioner O'Haver?
I just want to, I just want to make sure, because I was like you, Matt, trying to keep track of all these. So we, the, the issues that we talked about were, were the number of days, which we, which we've shared. We, another idea was also to limit them in certain areas of the city. Density caps. And. Those two, I think, kind of go away as we've removed the dedicated, correct? Cause those were a couple of ideas that were thrown out in our conversation today. But it, it would appear to me that with the removal of dedicated, those are. Going to have less influence, less impact. On trying to mitigate the negative effects that we're trying to avoid. Is, am I thinking about that correctly?
I think so. I'm seeing some shaking of heads too.
Okay.
Yeah.
We were talking about posting the zoning permit numbers, posting the certificate. We talked about revising the categories or having the certificate on site. There was some concern around enforcement and accountability, but again, I'm just not sure what we can add for that. So I, I think we've got everything covered that we've talked about today. So I just wanted to run that by y'all to make sure I have my notes right, especially when we pick it up in. Six weeks or whatever it is, I want to make sure I remember what we talked about.
Well, and I guess that's the one question I had is 45 days enough? Pick up the next January meeting and then refer it out to planning commission at the time? It should be.
What is the?
This is, uh, this, this is Keegan. Um, just looking at a calendar, it looks like the first meeting in, uh, December. When this would likely appear as a planning commission report is December 1st. So 45 days from December 1st would be the deadline by which any commission would have to report out their recommendation. So that, that wouldn't appear to leave a ton of time if the, um, if there's not a TCC meeting in December.
Oh, it wouldn't, it wouldn't.
Actually, the, the 45 days would be from the deadline that you currently have. Cause you're requesting a, an extension of the current deadline and the current deadline is the 21st of December.
The math I was just doing. Okay.
Yeah, Mark, Mark is correct. Apologies about the, uh, the math.
Okay. Great. Great. Um, and I guess one final note, I was, you know, we, we didn't talk too much about, and I, I missed my note. About larger developments, short-term rental and about the 25%. about larger developments, short term rental, and about the 25% cap or two units, whichever is greater. I know in other communities, large institutional apartment builders have basically gone in and to help with the lease up. They've done like half or a quarter of their building as short term rental. And there are companies that are doing that now. And that, that to me seems kind of very commercial use. And so I'm just kind of like curious. I'd be curious to get information from Rebecca on that as well. I still don't see the purpose of doing that at this point in time. But, but I, you know, it'd be nice to have one or two examples as to how that, how that helps. Because I feel like that also is somewhat predatory towards permitted residential units if we're trying to really continue to move, you know, long term dwelling units that count forward. So it also seems to counteract some of the, I just don't know how that ties into permitting and fees and stuff like that, because there are a lot more fees paid for hotel rooms than apartments when you're going through permitting, things like that. So I just, that's where I just want to make sure it's apples to apples and that things are fair. Commissioner O'Haver.
I'm glad you reminded me about that. We don't have to take up any more time today, I don't think. I did want to ask about that. I'm not good at math or legalese, although I did, Commissioner Miller, use the term Romanet this week when talking about something. So I appreciate that.
Really proud of you.
Thank you. Item F, so it says no more than 25% or two dwellings, whichever is greater. So if the multifamily building has 100 units, this says that 25 of those can be short term rentals. Am I reading that correctly? Okay, so and we know that typically these larger institutional multifamily projects, minimum 250 to a lot of times make the numbers work, 300. So we're really saying that 25% of those units could be short term rental? That seems like a lot to me, but maybe I'm reading that wrong.
I believe that's how it would read right now, which is, I guess, why I think that we should address this.
Okay, well, let's table it and we can talk about it. We got a little time now, I guess. But I just want to make sure I understand that. We make a note so I make sure I remember it in six weeks.
And I guess just for the records. Thanks. And who is the main contact for Rebecca? Just out of curiosity.
This is Mark. I can get back in touch with Rebecca.
Okay, great. Do you think you could just send her contact to all of us? That way, if we have any specific questions, we could just reach out to her directly as long as she's okay with that?
Yeah, I can check with her. If she's comfortable with that, then I can forge her contact info.
Great. Thank you so much. But yeah, and thanks again for reaching out to her, Mr. Holland. That was really helpful, you know, to just hear that, the third party take on it, so.
Well, I have to give kudos to Travis Crane as well. He said, it was, it was his contact.
And I guess Commissioner Fox to light the spark. Okay, well, so with that, we're, we have a passed motion and we'll see that at our next meeting. We do have one more text change today and sorry, I clicked on the wrong link. TC 1420, Community Gardens with onsite sales.
It's 1220. Maybe, you know, maybe I wrote the number down wrong.
Oh, okay.
You're correct, 1420.
Yep. If you're ready to give us the present, up, Commissioner O'Haver.
Sorry, can we take, I've got to step away for just two minutes here if we could just pause for a second.
Yeah, certainly. We'll take a two minute, two minute break.
That'll give me time to pull up my screen. All right, this is TC 20 dash, 14 dash 20 for Community Gardens with onsite sales. The bulk of this text change would come, just to jump right to it, in section 6.6.1 B2, where we would outline the standards or conditions for allowing onsite sales in residential districts where you have a community garden. And now these standards would consist of, sales would be limited to items produced onsite. There would be a limitation on the total amount of area at a cap of 2,000 square feet per lot. You would have to provide parking, one off street parking space for every 200 square feet of area devoted for sales with no less than three parking spaces being provided. And these areas for off street parking would have to be oriented to provide safe movement of vehicles and pedestrians. Any tent stand signs or other structures related to the sale, onsite sales would have to have a minimum setback of 10 feet from all property lines. Sinage would be limited to one sign of no more than 12 square feet and could be no taller than three and a half feet above ground elevation. It would not be allowed to be illuminated. All activities would have to cease by 8:00 P M when they're located in a residential district. They would have to maintain some waste collection facilities to minimize visual impact and not create any sort of adverse impacts on the surrounding community such as odor or fumes or loose debris or animal, rodent, insect infestation. They would also be required to have a zoning permit showing consistency with these considerations. This is a request that came from a citizen relative to an existing community garden and that was issued by way of a special exception. They would like to be able to sell their products or their crops, I guess, onsite. So, and I think that if they're still with us, that citizen or a representative of that group is with us today and has a comment on this text change. I will take any questions unless you just want to jump right in and listen to the citizen.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Without objection from the fellow commissioners, seeing that we have someone specifically from the industry to speak, I'd love to hear from them.
Hey, I'm Tammy Fordeau and I am the manager of the Well Fed Community Garden and owner of Sweet Peas Urban Gardens. And it was our citizens' petition in August that started this effort. First of all, thank you for considering a change that will allow our community garden, which is in a residential district, to have a produce stand. In light of COVID, of the COVID pandemic and the realization of many community members that our food supply chains need to be more resilient and more localized, we are happy to see the city act quickly to put in place this produce stand text change. In looking closely at the conditions in the text change, we'd like to just make a few, bring a few issues to your attention. The ordinance says sales should be limited to items produced onsite. This may seem reasonable, but it is actually problematic and likely difficult to enforce. Most local garden and urban agriculture projects collaborate extensively to ensure that they have quality and variety of produce. A stand would need to work to provide a convenient location for customers to consistently find produce, which could easily lead to offsite produce being sold. This limitation does not exist for other produce stands and seems unnecessary to support the goals of greater food access and small business support. Number two, the ordinance requires a setback of 10 feet from all property lines. We would happily meet this requirement on the sides and rear of the property lines. However, it would be difficult to market a produce stand if the tent, table, or sign couldn't be allowed closer than 10 feet to the street or sidewalk. The ordinance requires, number three, the ordinance requires waste collection facilities shall be provided on the property. This regulation may not be necessary. There would realistically not be any additional waste from our produce stand that is not already present at a community garden. Adding this condition simply adds to the complexity involved in getting the initial permit for the produce stand. Thanks for taking the time to listen to these specifics. I'll also leave you with a broader thought. The city assumes it supports and encourages urban ag, but in our experience, finding acceptance from the city for the basic needs of a successful community garden venture is onerous and has been unsupportive until as of late. A 2011 city staff encouraged both urban agriculture and community gardens, but the new U D O, when adopted, sidestepped some of the most important details of urban ag practices and structures that should be allowed as part of our operations. The 2030 strategic plan encourages urban agriculture as part of the desire for safe, vibrant, and healthy communities. In addition to this text change, we would like to ask that you start the process for staff to do a detailed comprehensive amendment to the Urban Agriculture Zoning Ordinance using the city's current thriving urban ag businesses, the Capital Area Food Network, the Urban Ag Collective, the Community Food Lab for support and feedback. Again, thank you for hearing me out.
Great. Well, thank you so much for the thorough follow up and kind of response to the text change. I think that that, us not being an urban ag, it helps kind of contextualize some of this. And I think it's also really interesting to hear about urban ag relative to the U D O as well. That's definitely a different, it takes a different path to do that than through here, but I believe, but because it's a comp plan change, but it is really interesting to hear that. And I want to make sure that we do share that with the broader commission as well.
Excellent.
I, I, I'm sure that a few of us have questions for you. So I kind of wanted to open it up to my fellow commissioners, with you still on the line, maybe for either additional questions or clarifications. But I just wanted to see, it's a little hard for me to see everybody because the presentation's still up. So just let me know if you have any questions. Is there any initial, Commissioner Miller?
Yes, and this might be more of a question for staff. I'm trying to figure out where specifically these new community gardens and these new standards would be applying. Looking at the U D O, this is, these community gardens are falling under agricultural use. That agriculture includes the following uses, and that includes community gardens. And then what we're specifically saying here, well, previously, the rule said that onsite sales are not permitted in residential districts, but they are permitted in mixed use in special districts with approval of a special use permit. So, so this is a residential district with a permitted agricultural use for a community garden? Or could someone give me some context about this?
It was approved with a special exception, but as you, as you see from the previous ordinance, there's a restriction on not, not allowing sales through, within a residentially zoned district. And this, what this would simply do was just remove that restriction. And there is a bit of, there are very, there are similarities between community gardens and farmers market stands.
Could everybody who's not speaking mute, that there's some feedback going on somewhere?
And those are what's permitted in a mixed use district. Now, this would apply strictly to the residential districts and it would still be a limited use.
So more specifically, we're talking about, so what would be the, the rules would be different if it's onsite sales in a residential district versus mixed use in special districts?
Yeah, because the residential districts are your R4, your R6, R8, R10, where you know, your mixed use districts would do have some commercial activity as well as residential activity. These, this is just for those residential districts.
So in those residential districts, what is required to have a community garden in the first place?
You would have to get a special exception. You would have to apply for a special exception and get approval of that special exception from the Board of Adjustment. So that is still the case, but just now, when you get that special exception, you can have the onsite sales.
And what are the parameters evaluated to determine whether something gets that special exception? I'm just trying to envision, how common is it going to be that someone's trying to put up a farm stand in a residential district, basically, a produce stand?
Yeah, I don't know how many of these are actually existing within the city. Other than this one, this one is the only one that I'm familiar with, but my time with the city has not been, you know, it's been two years. So I'm sure there are probably others within the city, but the numbers, it's not a great number of community gardens that I'm aware of. This, this, in my opinion, I don't think this is something that's going to be very frequent, at least, at least not currently.
Commissioner Miller, this is Keegan. I handle a fair number of these special use permit applications that go to the Board of Adjustment. And there are a set of showings that they have to basically prove in order for the S U P to be approved. In addition to any of the specific use standards that would be accompanying this type of use. I'm happy to read those off, but there are a set of general standards and then a set of more specific limitations or requirements that would be tailored to this use that are shown in the draft ordinance, I believe.
Or could you send me to the citation, is there a citation in the U D O I could look at?
Yeah, sure. It's section 10 to 9 E.
And this is Eric Codger. Since the U D O has been adopted, I think there have been three, maybe four, community gardens that have gotten special use permits through the Board of Adjustment. So the numbers are low.
What was that number, Eric? Did you say four?
Three, maybe four.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, and another question for staff, the feedback from our speaker about, you know, produce onsite versus produce from elsewhere. You know, I even think about things like honey or jam or anything, like anything that might be canned, et cetera. Anything that you think about that would be at a produce stand or at the farmer's market. Like, is there a way to accommodate that? Because I fully hear them and understand that, those limitations. And I guess for me, it's like the fact that these individuals already have to go through a special use permit process, it seems like they're already, the use is already pretty heavily vetted. You know, and so I just didn't know if there's a way to accommodate some of that.
Well, this is draft language and if this committee would want to lift that limitation, it's certainly up to you to do that and that's what we'll take into account.
This is, this is Justin. I just did want to point out that the U D O also has, we're talking about a community garden here, the U D O also has provision for a produce stand or mixed use uses. Produce stands are temporary in nature and do allow a whole set of items that are not produced onsite. They can be used for up to eight months out of the year. If, if they're not if they're not, the, the stand is not removed on a daily basis.
And there's one distinction with the produce stand that he's referring to, is that they have to be on a major classified roadway. So they couldn't be embedded on a residential street, for instance. So that is a distinguishing factor. That's probably worth noting.
Okay, Commissioner O'Haver had a follow-up question.
Well, yeah, I was kind of going down the same lines, Matt, and I, I think it's actually a larger question about, I noted that too, about what the, the reasoning was for sales to be limited to, to that which is onsite, but I also even think about requiring three parking lots, I mean, three parking spaces, that, that's challenging. And is the idea, is the concern that all of a sudden in a residential neighborhood, that you're going to be selling all kinds of stuff and people are coming from everywhere, because I mean, on most streets, you can park on the street, so why not utilize on-street parking, just like they do here? I mean, so, you know, I live over here in Oakwood, and the community garden here is awesome. I know it's a different zoning district, but I'm, I mean, I want to make sure we have, is there ability for shared parking like there are in other districts, if that's available, and I certainly understand not wanting to overcrowd neighborhoods, but I also think that some of this is a little bit limiting, and so the only, the only rationale I have is that the concern is that all of a sudden it becomes a little market that everybody's coming to, and you're selling all sorts of stuff, and streets get clogged up and neighbors get upset. So is that kind of, am I thinking about this correctly as I'm trying to paint the whole picture here? Well, this is something that's also required in, with the farm stands, and, and I think Justin was getting ready to chime in on this, so that, that is a standard that we mimicked from another section of the code. Just a matter of being consistent with similar uses otherwise allowed in the U D O.
Yeah, I mean, the intent and purpose really is to, is to not have, like you know, O'Haver said, a retail-type use in a residential zone. That's, that's what the, the limitation to items produced onsite is intended to accomplish.
Yeah, I mean, I guess even my house in Oakwood, I don't have off-street parking, so to, to think that we're going to have a community farm that's in a residential neighborhood that's going to provide three off-street parking spots, to me seems maybe a lot. I, I understand, again, I could understand some neighbors' concerns, I'd be concerned if, you know, if that was, well, I don't know that I would, but I can understand where there might be some neighbors' concerns, so I, I, I agree with Ms. Perdue. I, I do know how hard it was to get the, the city farm done. It took years to do that. It's been a great benefit to the neighborhood. And I think, again, for me, this is a little bit challenging because I, I want to encourage these, but I also understand what we're trying to, the negative impacts we're trying to mitigate. So I think those are all my questions for now.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I guess I, you know, I, I understand the kind of logic of mirroring, say, a farm stand. But I guess, when you talk about intensity, you know, what's the, is there any size limitations for an S P U for an urban garden? Is there any, like, square footage maximums or anything like that?
I don't believe there are any limitations on acreage.
Yeah, I, I don't believe there are.
Okay. And as, as far as application and permitting goes, stay with, you know, provided parking. I mean, does, does that mean that, you know, a community garden would have to go through like a permitting process, a plot plan, or, or a site plan tier one or something, and, and like have engineered drawings with like the right curb cut and, and like the right surface type and all that?
I believe so.
Because that, to me, like, just, I mean, I feel like, you know, it's a special use, it's, it's a, it's a, I mean, I, I think that everybody would, I think the reason it's a special use is that it's a community benefit, you know? I, I guess, I would think that things like compost, the smell of compost or something might be much more of an impediment than, you know, some people coming by and buying produce daily or, or weekly, but Commissioner O'Haver?
Well, I do notice, and I, I guess it's for, for this committee, but maybe also Ms. Perdue can speak up, we are limiting, so I get to use this again, number 2B, Romanet number 2, says that the total sales area shall be limited to no more than 2,000 square feet. So I guess, one, can we, can we rationalize that we can eliminate parking, or we can mitigate the parking in tier one and all of that by, by, by controlling that size? And then I guess the question to Ms. Perdue is, 2,000 square feet seems like a lot to me, but I don't know, I'd be curious about her input on that.
So we've had, you know, like I said, when I was starting off, we've had so many challenges here with the city, and initially, the first part, the first thing that, that we were rebuked about was parking. So it was Thomas Crowder, and he insisted that we have a very nice parking area. So we've already got the permit for the parking. That happened in 2013 or 14, I can't remember when. So we've been down that path, and we've got that one. And then we went to the community garden permit, and now we're just trying to be able to sell the produce that we have here. The stand is going to be near carport of this property, so you'd have to come see what we're talking about, but it's far less than 2,000 square feet.
So I wonder, I wonder, Matt and fellow commissioners, if, and, 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 sorry, Ms. Perdue, that you had to put in that nice parking lot. I think we're trying to find a way that we can, you know, mitigate some adverse effects to neighborhoods, but again, not put an applicant or, or a community use like this through such strenuous requirements. Maybe there's a way that we can control that, or again, rationalize it through the size of the sales area. I guess the next question is, how's the sales area defined? Is it literally the stand? Is it where people can stand in line? I mean, what is, how does sales area, what does that 2,000 square feet entail? I guess that's a question for Justin.
Well, before we, Commissioner O'Haver, just did want to point out to the point about parking areas, there are provisions in section B3 that exempt the parking spaces from the surface requirements. There are provisions that they provide for safe movements in and out of the right of way, but they are exempt from the landscaping and surface requirements that other, that other developments have to provide.
Gotcha. Not the parking itself, but the, the V S A and all that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You know, as, as far as the sales area, I would think we would, you know, look at a plot plan and, and just, you know, draw the smallest box around the area that includes, you know, all of the display, all of the queuing, and, and whatever else is, is dedicated to the onsite sales of the items.
Gotcha. But I'm just, I'm messing with you a little bit, Justin. You meant tier one site plan, right? Not plot plan.
You're absolutely right. Thank you.
I was messing with you.
Old habits die hard.
Yes, sir, they sure do.
So I guess, kind of bringing it back to the table, you know, I, I guess I still have a question on whether or not, because I could even see, like, other producers, et cetera, being able to come on Saturday and sell, you know, similar to like the Christmas trees at Raleigh City Farm, like, I mean, if that's the case, I, I don't know, I'm just thinking through why, you know, someone might want to be able to sell things, or honey or jam or things, like I said before, other produce to supplement what they're able to grow on site. I mean, do we have any, any, any ways to get creative with that? Commissioner O'Haver?
Can y'all hear me? I'm sure Commissioner Miller will have a better idea, but my creative way is let's remove it, or say that you can do it. I, I don't know. But I know Blanny had some ideas, so I'll refer to her.
Well, I just more wanted to clarify, so we're trying to figure out a way to let a community garden in a residential district survive and perhaps even thrive, but without turning a community garden in a residential district into essentially a farmer's market? That, because I, I certainly see the concerns that neighbors would have, and that I would have, if it went from, oh, one of the, one of the plots in my neighborhood is going to be like this nice garden, to we're going to be running a farmer's market next door to my house. And especially if they don't require parking and don't, you know, all this kind of thing. I think, given the limited use of these special use permits so far, and particularly in residential districts, any limitations that, including the parking limitations that are currently in the proposed tech change, and that this community garden in a residential district already complies with, I would certainly want to keep those in. If we need to make an additional tech change for something else in the future, for a different use, then maybe we look at it that, it at that time. So maybe that would be one way, as opposed to sort of opening up this general policy all over the city. But in terms of figuring out how to limit the community garden sales to not, just stopping it from turning it into a full farmer's market in a residential district, I'm, I would need to put more thought around on that.
I wanted to point out some existing language in the produce stand requirements. They do allow, in the addition to sales of agricultural produce, that 25% of the produce stand area may be devoted to the sales of homemade food goods, such as baked goods, jams, and relishes. So there is, that may be something you could use to craft a similar provision for community gardens.
Right. And I'm limiting a percentage of this area, yeah?
25% of the sales area.
Yeah. And I guess, I mean, it's only 2,000 square feet as well, so you know, that, that, I, I feel like that's a pretty significant constraint, too. Commissioner O'Haver?
Yeah, but I, I was just doing some math, right? I'm sure Bert's got a couple of these sketches, too, but I mean, if we were even to reduce that to, let's just say, 1,000, okay, because Ms. Perdue said that, that 2,000 was, was plenty. There's still a 30 by 30 area or a 20 by 50 area onsite, which, again, I'll, in a minute, maybe we can get some input from Ms. Perdue. But to, and I agree with you, Blanny, like, that would be my concern as well, but I just don't see 1,000 square feet turning in to a farmer's market. And then I guess my other question is, was there any public input on this? I didn't see anything in our backup, but did we, there was something in our backup? Did I miss it? This did go, yeah, this, this did go to our public portal, but I don't, the, the closing of the public portal did not, it extended beyond this meeting. So we haven't got all the comments, or the comment period has not closed, did not close before this meeting occurred, so to date, I'm not aware of any questions that we've received on this, on the public portal.
Commissioner?
Okay.
This is Keegan. I'm just going to ask a question on behalf of Commissioner Fox, because her audio is down. She was just wondering what the size limitations were for accessory structures in residential districts. For those who may be curious, that's located in section 672 of the U D O, and it does vary depending on the lot size. I know there is some language in the code, or excuse me, in the draft ordinance related to a setback of certain temporary structures that may be associated with the urban garden, but I just wanted to provide that information for discussion.
If I could, while everybody was typing and doing math, Roberta, I guess I'm, I'm reading into your question, you can give me a thumbs up, that the concern being, can accessory dwelling unit turn into a farm stand? No. We can't hear you. Sorry.
Roberta, there's a phone number in the link. I think you, I've had to use it a couple of times to call in. I can forward that to you in case you don't have it handy.
I didn't mean to send us down a rabbit hole you didn't want us to, Bert, but sorry about that.
I think she was saying, we've already got some standards for accessory uses.
Okay.
And so if we do, why not use those rather than try to create something new? Can anybody?
Do I get to drop the mic on that?
Can anybody say tech change committee charades on Tuesday night? All right, thank you, Mr. York.
I, I fully support utilizing other language in the U D O. Is that something that you have readily available, Mr. Fox? And I guess another question is, are, are we going to want to hold this at the table or move this forward today?
What? Before you get to that issue, I mean, you can just reference six, section 672D1 and say that the sales area be limited to the floor area designated in section 6721, 2, 2D1. Because that's where it says, if your less than 10,000, if your lot is less than 10,000 square feet, max floor area is 600 square feet, if it's between 10,000 and 40,000, it's 900. So it's already spelled out in that table if you just want to reference that table. And I think that's what she was getting at.
That'd be great.
That's two, that's two mic drops, I get.
That, that seems to be very reasonable, so.
And for those curious, I did put a link to that section of the code that talks about accessory structures.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
I would be supportive of making those changes and seeing them at our next tech change committee meeting, and then also holding it at the table since the public comment period is still open, so that at our next meeting, we can both see these changes and see if there have been additional public comments.
I, I agree.
I agree, but can we specify which changes we're talking about? Or, or just clarify?
Roberta pantomimed them?
Well, so I, so I think that as far as the size, I think that it is referencing the section 6.7.2.2D.1, which references accessory structure size permitted relative to lot area, or lot size? which references accessory structure size permitted relative to lot area, or lot size. And then I think with that mechanism, because they're controlled square footages, we're okay eliminating the restrictions on what can be sold there because of the size? Now, did I jump?
I am. Can I venture as far as to say also reconsidering the off-street parking?
I would recommend, since the intent of the authorization was for the community garden to have onsite sales of community garden produce, that if you want to expand it beyond that, that you follow Mr. Rometta's suggestion and borrow the language from the produce stand. Otherwise, if you remove it, it's wide open. People can sell shoes, jackets, books. And so I think it's, you want to keep it tied to the community garden, otherwise I think you run into the issue that Commissioner Miller was saying would concern her, as well as other neighbors.
What was that section again, that we can sell jams and what else?
It's the produce stand section, it's 6.8.2.
6.8.2, all right, thank you.
He hasn't.
So does it limit outside produce? I mean, I guess there's really, if you're selling all produce, it's really hard for someone to know if the produce was produced there or not, aside from like a sticker.
The produce stand, the produce stand does not. You know, that is what people use to sell Christmas trees, pumpkin patches, all sorts of things. You know, but there are some distinctions there to keep in mind, you know, like Eric brought up earlier, they do have to be on a major road. In residential districts, produce stands have to be at the site of, you know, a civic, you know, a church, or a school, or an apartment complex. It can't be on a single-family lot and be a produce stand as well. So there are some distinctions there between that and the community garden.
But I guess, David, you're saying we should use, I mean, can, is it bad to use that same type of language somewhere else in the code, but not make it be on a major thoroughfare? I mean, is that a bad thing to do?
There's a potential to have a special use permit make these distinctions known. Perhaps I can envision some community gardens that never want to avail themselves of a produce stand, and they're fearful that there might be opposition to their proposal because it would be a by right thing, unless that was evaluated as part of their special use permit approval or not. To date, no special use permit's been given for a community garden that intends to have onsite sales, because it's expressly prohibited in the code, and the board can't vary that. So, might be something to consider moving forward, have a special use permit to have the community garden, and if you want to have sales, that that's a tag on, that you have to make that disclosure at the time that you seek your special use permit, and then you have to give all the details at that time. Now, that doesn't address the well-fed community garden who's already gone through that process. If we take that route, it may well require them to have to revisit the board, if that's what, you know, ultimately comes out of the meat grinder at the end, but that is a way to distinguish, you know, the different types of community gardens that exist, and not hold everybody to this fear that they may turn into some kind of major market in a residential district, if that's not the intent of the proponent. Just something to consider. And currently, the code requires a special use permit to have onsite sales at a community garden in a mixed-use district. I think that's kind of strange, because by right, you can sell all sorts, you can build a car dealership in a mixed-use district with the approval of a site plan. You don't have to go to the board adjustment. But if you're going to sell rutabagas, you have to get a special use permit. It seems kind of odd. So I would propose that that be stricken from the current code, for the mixed-use districts anyway. Just a suggestion. Because they can do the garden by right. And I don't know why they can't sell by right in a district that allows for commercial activity. By right.
Okay. Then that'd be great to see that. I think at the next meeting as well.
So, sorry, we are, do y'all agree we are or not removing the requirement for off-street parking?
Personally, I'd like to keep it in. Just given the fact that we are changing this to a commercial use, and all of the ones currently existence that we know of in residential districts already comply. That I think if we need to change that in the future, then we can address that at that time.
Don't necessarily have a requirement for off-street parking. The well-fed was kind of a early bird in the process. So that may have been something that was pushed for, but it was not a code requirement across the board. So not all of these have off-street parking necessarily. Again, if that was something that was going to be evaluated as a distinguishing factor for any community gardens that also wanted to have sales, then the board, if that was the choice you make, the board could evaluate whether parking would be required or not. You know, there are some neighborhoods where there's not on-street parking, and there are others where there are, and then there are other situations where the parking's already tight, because the residents don't have off-street parking. So it could be an open-ended thing for the board to evaluate on a case-by-case basis, because that is one of the considerations of the special use permit process, that there's not impacts to traffic and public infrastructure, et cetera.
Yeah, I think, Blanny, just my concern is that, well, three's a lot, and there's a cost, and you've got to go through some type of permit review for driveway cuts and everything else, and that just might, to me, be a little bit limiting, but if we feel strongly enough that we should keep it in, I'm okay with that.
I see that point, too. And is there a way that we can leave this at the board of adjustment? I mean, it seems like some kind of tiered approach would make sense, just like we're doing with the size of the commercial area. Is this something that we can leave to the board of adjustment, or would we need to also create those kind of tiers?
Well, right now, this wouldn't go to the board of adjustment for any, you would go to the board of adjustment for a special use permit to have the community garden. Sales could be added later, unless, as Eric has suggested, the board added a condition, you know, prohibiting onsite sales. The recommendation or the authorization from council for this tax change was to allow onsite sales as a matter of right for community gardens that had already, you know, and so to add it to the special use permit aspect, I mean, if it's a use that's allowed as a matter of right, if you have the special use permit, it will be a topic of future special use permit requests. But I think the intent was that existing community gardens not have to go back through the special use permit process to add this use. I think that was the intent of the authorization for this tax change. And so I think if you want to provide parking standards, then it should be in this tax change. You could say the number of parking spaces, or if parking is required, is tied to the size of the sales area, you know, and use that same table again, but if you want to provide for parking, this is the time to do it in this tax change.
Thank you. Yeah, so I think that maybe I would amend my comment to say, or at least that my gut is to change it to tie it to the commercial, or the sales area and that size. So that also, you know, a community garden could keep it small if they didn't want to build a parking spot, and go through that process. Thoughts from fellow commissioners? Commissioner O'Haver?
Thumbs up, Blanny. I don't know if you can see me.
So I think just for clarity, so staff has direction, I think, is that just seeing our interpretation around that? I mean, is it, you know, right now, that D1 accessory structure size is, you know, for less than 10,000 square feet, it's 600 square feet for between 10,000, so a quarter acre to an acre, it's 900 square feet, and then over an acre, it's 1,200 square feet? You know, could it be like zero parking for a quarter acre? One space for a quarter to an acre, and then three spaces for over an acre? I mean, does that? Just kind of pulling that out, but it seems relatively proportional. I don't know.
Do we want to base it on the size of the lot, or the size of the sales area?
You have a large lot with a very small sales area, you would have to build more parking than a smaller lot, potentially. With a larger sales area.
So I guess it would be tied to the 600, 900, or 1,200, then? Okay, that's fine.
Yes, I'm for tying it to the sales area. That way, if for some reason a site could not comply, they could just choose to have a smaller sales area and not have to provide parking, as much parking.
That's fine, yeah.
And I am going to have to jump if Commissioner, will that make us lose, I know that we just need three for a quorum, but if Commissioner Fox can't speak with that, create a problem?
I think we're good. I mean, I think we're good. Commissioner O'Haver, did you have any final?
Well, Blanny, before you hang up, I just, I mean, I want to understand waste collection facilities. I mean, I understand what we have to do on commercial sites for a waste collection facility, when you mentioned that it shall be screened and minimize impact, et cetera. Are we talking about the same type of enclosure, or something less than that? So, Blanny, I just wanted you to hear that question. If you got to run, then we can fill you in later on the answer.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Miller.
And on the parking space for every Oops, sorry. Using the retail standard to apply to the size of the sales area versus a standard for 300 square foot building, and they may only have a 200 square foot building?
Sorry, I wasn't following you, Eric.
The parking requirement, would we tie it to retail sales and use the same parking standard we have for all other sales? The one for 300 square feet of sales area?
Oh. Well, that would then require oh, I mean, then it would require parking no matter what, wouldn't it?
Well, it would. It's going to require one space if we have any requirement. I didn't know where you were going with your size thresholds, as it related to building size, and what the standard would be. And if they don't have a building, you know, they may just have outdoor display. You know, picnic table with some cucumbers and an umbrella.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's an intensity issue, and so I guess, you know, I don't think that they should be required to have a parking space if it's a couple hundred square feet, you know, so I don't know how we maybe could we just see one or two options, and then we can fill it out at the next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah. And I guess with that, I think we have the other bullet points, right?
Well, I'm just curious about this waste collection facility. How much of a cost is that? Is that the same that's going to be required on commercial sites? Because I know what that costs, and it's a lot. So I just want to make sure I understand the, like, what the requirements are going to be for Romanet 7, waste collection facility shall be provided. How are we defining that? I certainly get the intent. We don't want trash laying around, and I mean, like, I'm all for it. I just want to make sure I understand what that really means.
Yeah, I mean, how does it tie into, say, a small, like, coffee shop or something? I mean, I see them just having the same trash cans as me.
Yeah, and that was the thought behind that, is even if they have like a couple of those 30-gallon, or not 30-gallon, like 50-gallon trash cans, they should take measures to make sure that those are secure and don't cause any sort of negative impacts on adjacent property. You know, as far as screening goes, I mean, they could even place them behind one of the existing buildings, or conceal them by landscaping. It's just a measure that's stated there, just to minimize, again, any negative impact that they would have on adjacent properties.
Okay, I mean, if that, if our legal team agrees that that's how it's covered and wouldn't be interpreted, that they have to come in and build some type of enclosure that gets expensive, I'm fine with that. Again, I get the intent.
Yeah, that was certainly the intent when I wrote that, when I put that in there, was that they had some sort of screening for a dumpster of any.
Okay, well, if we're good with that, I'm fine.
Yeah, I guess just want to make sure that there isn't some requirement when going through building permit, you know, that they get held up. So I guess, whatever needs to be updated, I guess that's what I would worry about. It's just how it's interpreted in writing, on a plan.
That, exactly. So maybe, Mark, maybe there's just a way, just think about that and see if there's a slight tweak or something, just to make sure it's clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, I think we're good. Right?
Yeah, definitely, I just.
Okay, okay. Then.
I just like smiling, Matt. I just like smiling.
Awesome. Well, thank you, everyone, for a full tax change committee today. Appreciate everyone's input and thoughts, and look forward to kind of the next, kind of hopefully, final iteration of these. We can keep rolling. Thank you, everyone. I guess this concludes the tax change committee for November 17, 2020, and see y'all at Planning Commission. Thank you, bye.